I will then ask the council if they have any conflicts of interest on any item on the agenda this evening. All right. Moving right along, we're going to, excuse me, bring back public comment. It's been a little while since we will do this. I'm going to ask if anyone from the public has comment regarding non-agenda items. Anything that does not come on the agenda, I'll ask you step up to the podium right over here, and there's a microphone that we can hear you.
I think we're all familiar with the statement, "In the beginning was the word." And with that, I want to explain to you the plan I have to move forward with Tauny Town and also to protect its past. It takes thoughts to begin, then it takes a plan, then it needs a foundation. And I had planned that the first thing to do would be to put our buildings, our historic buildings, on the National Register of Historic Places. Then I picked up this folder, and my gosh, they're already there. So we're halfway there. And this plan would use these historic buildings to make money, and not for Tauny Town, but for this nonprofit foundation that would be set up. And the money made from these buildings, and it would not be enough money, but it would continue to rotate. It would not be taken out to be spent for paying light bills or anything. So that's the beginning of this plan. We have to have a nonprofit foundation set up to get this going. This would be too much for the council to take on eventually, because it would need two teams. One to work with preserving our past with these buildings, and the second part would be to build our future. And I kind of ran this by two people in my family, and right away, they thought of negative things, why it wouldn't work. But it's a three-part plan, and if you build a house, the first thing you need is a foundation, then you need walls, and you need a roof. And so to begin, I'm asking that the council consider this to set up a nonprofit foundation to go forward and get this plan in place. Now, when, I'm using the experience I have for working in a large church for over 25 years. When you come up with something new, there were certain people that always said, "It can't be done. We've never done that before. It's going to cost money." And it was shot down before they ever tried it. So that church was stagnant and did not move anywhere until those people started to die off. And finally, after 20 years, they finally got the new sanctuary that they needed 10 years before. And this is what I think is going on with Tauny Town, as I've watched it the last 10 and 12 years. The council is doing a very good job. If this was a bus, I say, you got air in the tires, you got gas in the tank, you got a new driver. Now it's time to go somewhere. And so there are ways to do this, using universal laws. And one of the ways to do this is you, another way is use quantum physics. Because if three people agree on something, you have the power of 27 people. And if five people agree on something, you have, and they're all in agreement, you have the power of 125 people. And we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. Now it'd be 512 people. So I want to go back and say that this National Register of Historic Peoples, I've done this before. My family had a farm up in Pennsylvania. The man that built the house there was a chain bearer for George Washington. And then later, years later, George Washington came through as military man, and this same man was an Indian scout, he and his two uncles. So I've done these things before. I know that it can be done if they don't get shot before they're ever tried. So that's what I want to say to you. Seriously, seriously, consider setting up a nonprofit foundation. I don't want to say anything more about it. I think that's enough to think about it. I will say this, that once you do that, it will open the door for vast amounts of money. I was clicking through the TV, changing stations, and the man who runs the Ford Foundation, somebody must have asked him for money, and he said, "We only give to nonprofit foundations." Bingo. That's why the Ford Foundation turned me down when I wrote him a letter and asked for money. It's sort of like a country club or something. If you don't join, you don't get the goodies. So that's another good thing to think about. Let's see if I'm finished here. This would take a lot of energy and a lot of work, and it would probably have to have a special committee. But as I see it, it would always be under the council until it's totally formed. Because as I see it going down the line, I think you should think of one word, William And as I see it in five years, 10 years, 20 years, this is a 40- or 50-year plan, and Eventually, it will take electricians, it will take carpenters. And I would hope that we would use local people. When I first came here, Mr. Mayor McCarron said, "I'd sure like to see some jobs here for local people." And I would surely like to see this nonprofit foundation, all the jobs there filled by local people. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. I appreciate that. I'll ask if anyone else has any public comment pertaining to items not on the agenda this evening. All right. Nothing further. We'll move right along. Up for adoption on Monday evening is Resolution 2021-10. This is our monthly water allocation. This for July of 2021. I'll ask the council if they have any concerns or input for this. All right. If satisfied, that'll be up Monday evening for your approval. I'll now ask Mr. Weprick if he has a city manager report for us this evening.
Just a couple of updates on this. PSI signed the contract documents for the wastewater treatment plant for the, excuse me, for the micro seed project. And skipping down to Trevani and Terrace, the contractors started work over there. They've got their construction entrance off of King's Drive established, and they've got some materials loaded in. They haven't started excavation or put the erosion and sediment controls in place yet, but they have started to work on the project a little bit. So that's really about it for me this month. I mean, I can entertain answering any questions, but not a whole lot updating on the project front this month.
Questions for the city manager on his report? All right. Are there any questions on the departmental reports as they've been presented to you?
All right. I do want to point out, since we're on departmental reports, I think we had a very successful Independence Day celebration. I think Saturday went great, up until the rain came, and delayed our fireworks until Monday evening. But I want to thank everyone that came out to the park and those that were able to watch it from their homes. I heard from many people around the city and far away from the city who were able to enjoy our fireworks. I think it was a great hit, and I appreciate Lorena putting that together and all the departments working together. I know the police did a tremendous job handling traffic on both nights, especially Saturday night in the rain. I know Public Works was involved, Economic Development was involved. It was a big group effort, and when you have a lot of departments of one person, they tend to work together really well. So I just want to mention kudos to all of them. I think it was a great success. And what I've been hearing, all positive, is hopefully we can do it each year. I think we all hope for that.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Bigliotti?
My apologies. I did have a question about the Department of Public Works report. I noted item number three, that there was to be a running total of tipping fees from Carroll County for recycling and refuse that would be attached, but either I missed it or I didn't have that in my packet.
We'll have it for Monday night.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions on departmental reports?
Do want to bring one thing to your attention. Just heard from Meech, our Economic Development Director, this evening to add into his report. He has been working on a grant application for, with Department of Housing and Community Development, for additional facade improvement monies to be used within the community legacy area. He would like to apply for $65,000 and use a little different approach than we've used with facade monies in the past. DHCD is suggesting kind of rebranding it as more building improvements and making some funds available for things beyond facades, particularly for commercial buildings. But he realized, as he was wrapping up the application, that he's going to need a resolution of support from the council to move forward with it. Unfortunately, the application is due tomorrow. So if we could get consensus this evening to move forward with the application, basically we just, as we've done with facade improvement monies before and applications before, it's the similar resolution that, you know, we're supportive of the application and that we have the wherewithal to administer it. So I don't have a draft resolution for you this evening, unfortunately. Jay just let me know about it, or Meech let me know about it kind of at the end of the day today. So we are just looking for consensus to move forward with the application, and we will catch up on the resolution. I suppose we could authorize the mayor to sign the resolution when Meech has it ready.
Might this be the resolution? You said DHCD.
Is that for you? Okay.
It's at my place. Pretty much swearing away everything about the city and my firstborn child. Simply states corporation hereby authorized to apply for and accept financial assistance from Department of Housing and Community Development. It's all rather boilerplate, really. See if there's anything that jumps out at me. It actually looks like a form resolution we've actually used in the past for similar grants.
Have the preamble and our usual stuff added to it. I think that's the, I think that's the requirements of the resolution.
Okay, I'm going to actually hand this off to the city attorney. If he can look over this real quick, and then we'll go from there. It doesn't state whereas, but it does have warehouses in it.
Are you waiting for me to do this now?
Why, just, does it qualify as a resolution in its current form?
A red pen out, then, okay.
In its current form, I'll say.
I would suggest that you just adopt a resolution of the spirit of what you want to do, and we write something to make it work, because this isn't going to work.
Okay, very good. Do we wish to do this by consensus or vote? What would you recommend, Mr. Gallow?
I would say that if you just do it by consensus, since it's a resolution, you're probably all going to be in favor of trying to apply for this, that you just basically say that you want to apply for this or direct the staff to do it. And then we'll come up with a nice flowery resolution that says that. The reason this isn't any good, not to be like all attorney-like, is it's a form one that deals with like corporations and things like that.
Perfect, okay. So I'll ask the council then if you are on board for us to move forward with trying to get this money from DHCD.
Sure.
Very good. Work your magic, it's due tomorrow. And with that, Mr. Gallow, we're on to your legal report.
I've been working hard on this resolution for facade grants, and, talking about the serious stuff, the Sewell annexation. We are at the point where, you know, we've half-stepped this to the wall, constantly saying it's coming, it's coming, it's coming. And we're at the point where it's ready to go. We have the annexation plat. While we haven't put our good housekeeping seal of approval on it as a staff, it's pretty much where it needs to be. If it needs to be tweaked or things like that, it can, it can happen. We don't need to keep the cover over it and not unveil it anymore. Same thing with the annexation agreement. We've gotten to the point where the things we want are in it, there are things that we might not want that are in it, and we're going to give our opinion to the applicant saying, "We might not support these things, but if you want them, then take it to the council. And if you guys want to do it or not, that's a decision." But we can't do this piecemeal anymore. So what I was thinking was, in the August meeting, in your work session, you would have had in advance the proposed annexation agreement, the issues that we have with it, the proposed plat, so you would know what that was, and then the proposed annexation resolution. And you have all those things, the applicant can make their case, they don't necessarily need to be here, you can decide, "I want this in or this out." What I'm getting at is, there needs to be an order of we do these things. We need to agree to the annexation agreement first before we introduce the annexation resolution. That doesn't mean you can't have all the pieces of paper with you, and that if we agree to the agreement, then at your Monday meeting, you can introduce the resolution. And if we don't agree to it because you need to change something, then it's okay. You don't introduce it on Monday, you wait another month, but the work product is done. The issue is that we can't make any more, these are policy decisions on some of these, and we're not going to be able to do that, even though Mr. Weprick and I haven't put our seal of approval on the documents. It needs to get ahead, it needs to move on. So that's the plan, and I know that when we talked about this before, everybody focuses on the, "What is it going to be out there?" Right? When you expect to open the map up that I'm going to give you or you're going to get from Clara, it's not going to have any streets or houses or anything on that, it's just going to be a big block of land. We're trying to make it simplified to make it less complicated. The big block of land comes in, we make some general promises back and forth in our annexation agreement, but nothing specific about like how many houses or what type of houses or things like that, very general, so that it's a question for you of, "Do you want it in town or don't you?" Under general terms. And then if you agree to have it in town, and we go through the annexation process, which is going to take 90 days, I mean, it's going to take significant time to work through, then they would come back to you and say, "We would like community village." And they would have some more drawings for you. And then they would go to the planning commission, and they would do the process a little bit more, one at a time, instead of trying to get all the approvals together. We felt that was better, because then you have more control over the details. Because the concern we had was, even though you'd like everything locked up, saying, "This is what we're agreeing to," we're going to miss something. You're talking about like a multi-year project, you know, 10-years project, and you want to figure it all out on day one. Just think if we'd have done that for Mead's Crossing. You know, they came in in 2008, and they're still building. We wouldn't have been able to ever figure it out on day one. So that's what I'm kind of recommending, is our strategy becoming more general. I wanted you to be prepared for that, because it's going to be public at that point in time. These agreements and these things will be public, so you'll have to be able to answer questions. I want the mayor to be good with it before we give it to the council, and then I want you to have a working understanding of it before we come to that meeting. So I will have everything to you in that order before August, unless you say you want to wait. And that would be up to you. The only reason I say, "Do you want to wait?" is we had the presentation today, the, we didn't have it, but the one we were supposed to have, was, "Hey, maybe you would like to entertain another annexation." And we said kind of last month, you were going to separate those two anyway, but maybe you'd like to hear about one while you're considering the other. I don't know, that's up to you and up to what the mayor and the presentation would be.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Gallow on his report, and also your thoughts on the Sewell annexation? Do you want, move forward, accept his timeline of having it before you next month, or do you want to put it off any longer?
I would want to maintain the timeline as it is now. I don't feel like it'd be very courteous to try to put it off.
That timeline, then.
All right, that's all we need. You have any questions?
Very good.
You don't need to wait until the meeting to do it. I mean, so if there's any questions, please email me once you get the documents. I would hope at our meeting, we could make decisions, if we had to make decisions. That's all I have, thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gallow. Moving us into new business, I'll start with our monthly financial report. I'll ask if there's any comments or questions on the monthly financials as they've been presented to you. All right. If satisfied, I'm going to ask the same of the accounts payables. Under new business number three, with the annexation request, I believe that's regarding, excuse me, the Harney Road annexation. We did not have the delegation this evening, so I'm going to strike that from the agenda at this point. Number four, we bring our annual town-county agreement. I believe Ms. Weprick is most familiar with it at this point, so if you want to guide us through what minor changes there are.
It's all the same, it's just new dollar amounts have been plugged in there, and, scroll down and find it. You know, sometimes I miss the paper, too. going forward, we're going to be doing 2% a year instead of 5% over the life of the permit, so our annual amount is dropping there. But otherwise, it's the same, it's the same document, it is word for word every year. And so the end result is, let's see. So our grant amount is 410,642. Then from that, they are subtracting the things that we've agreed to in the MOU, so $14,285 for the MOU. And the city share for, for the, our portion of the staff that helps with the stormwater projects is, actually, I got that backwards. $14,000 is for the support services for the, for the MOU, for the MPDES staff, and $39,682 is for the NPDES retrofit projects. So, so those numbers have changed since last year's. Otherwise, it's the same, the same document that we agree to every year.
Any questions from the council? I think at this point, most of us are familiar with the document. I think overall, with the decrease in the stormwater management, I think we're faring pretty well here. We do rely on the county for a number of things. One thing is outlines the fact that they collect all of our city taxes on our behalf. They don't charge us for doing so, and then they simply distribute to us. Any questions from council? All satisfied, we shall move on. Next, we had a memo from Lorena, the Parks and Rec Director, for revised use of parks' capital funding for fiscal year 2022. She outlined a lot of figures in her memo. Ms. Weprick, did you and her meet on this specifically and kind of break it down a little bit for us?
And on the table in front of you this evening was an addendum to that memo that I think will, it provides a bit of an update and also maybe a little bit more succinct plan. So after seeing Lorena's original figures, I talked with Barry about the budget implications and everything, and we went ahead and took a look at the current park impact fee balance. And because we, you recall, we did our budget planning fairly early in the year, so we could pass the budget a little bit ahead of time, especially with it being an election year. So we were using more or less mid-year figures in our planning. So as of 6/30/21, the park impact balance, and that includes the new park impact fund as well as the former fee in lieu of open space fund that we've been collecting for years, that stood at $495,467.05. So that's basically the pot of money that's available for park capital projects. We didn't manage to complete the Roberts Mill Park improvements, the new walk, well, the repaved and partially reconstructed walking path and the pond bank stabilization. We were not able to get that done during FY21, so we do need to include that in the FY22 numbers. So we're taking the $150,000 for that project off of that. That leaves us with $345,000. And the revised FY22 capital outlay, as was in Lorena's initial memo, is $271,153.75. So that's after going from the original estimates to where we've gotten some, for example, with the parking lot, we've gotten an actual bid for the parking lot now, so we could adjust that number down, because the bid came in lower than we had anticipated. So that's, that's the FY22 capital line. So if we, after we take that out, we're left $74,313.30 in the park fund. And Lorena is proposing with those projects she outlined on the initial memo, the pavilion roofs, replacing those with metal roofs, and also to provide a, to get rid of a rather dilapidated storage shed at THS Park and replace it with a new storage building. Those projects would come in at $52,100. So assuming that we don't get any more contributions into the park fund, that would leave that would leave us at 22,213 left in the park fund. And also, because of that increased money coming into the park fund due to the new, new construction of new homes, we will not need to tap into fund balance as was originally anticipated. So, you know, things, things are looking good as far as the, the park impact balance right now that we can do these things that we had planned and a little bit more without having to dip into fund balance, into the general fund as we had anticipated at budget time. So that will also be, Barry is working on a budget amendment that should be before you next month. Once the auditors are through with their work and we've got final figures for the year, we'll do our year-end budget amendment. And some of these park figures are going to be updated regardless of what we decide in terms of these additional $52,000 in projects. Because again, we're, we're, we're carrying things forward that we thought we were going to be able to do in '21. So we need to adjust for that. We got a lot more revenue than we anticipated, so we need to adjust for that. So at any rate, I hope that this evening's memo kind of clarifies things, maybe simplifies it a little bit. So the gist of it is, you know, Lorena has some additional projects she would like to squeeze in in FY '22. They total up to that 52,100. And, you know, she would like some direction to, to move forward with that. And that, that certainly can, you know, that's a Monday night thing. We don't need to know that today.
Overall, it's all great news. I think anything that prevents us from having to dip into fund balance is always a positive thing. All the projects that she put on here are, I think at this point crucial. A lot of them have been delayed for one reason or another. Thinking he would do all the pavilion roofs at one time is important. That way they match and it helps stave off any major issues in the future. What I would like to suggest to council, as you probably see on social media from time to time, we do get a fair amount of complaints about the pond at Roberts Mill. Primarily being the heavy presence of algae, sometimes the odor that comes from it, because even with the aerator, it is still very stagnant water. I'd like to, like the council to consider purchasing a fountain to go into that pond. Since we're doing the walkway, kind of do all this at once and give it one big miner facelift. The cost of that comes in at $9,300 for, I think it's a 25-foot fountain. I believe DNR told her that would fix a lot of the stagnant water issues that we have. So she brought to my attention a few months ago, and I'd like to bring it to your attention that there is a possible solution for that. I think would make a lot of people happy. It would help chase the fish towards the outskirts of the pond, making a little better fishing for people and also eliminate the odor that is sometimes present there. So as you're looking at this and you look at her proposed FY '22 projects, you may consider adding that one to it. Do we wish to discuss this evening that?
Mr. Mayor, would that come out of, I guess, the balance of park impact fees?
It would be. It would be adding to the proposed FY '22 budget, uh, projects. And that would then reduce the balance of park impact fees. Again, my thought being, since we're already working around the pond like we are, just kind of help knock two major problems out at one time. The walkway and the stagnant water issue that we have.
Just for the fountain or is there going to be?
That's delivered and installed. I believe it's delivered and installed according to her. It is adequate.
Than adequate, is it?
I believe it's adequate. It is, it is mostly the utility aspect of it in terms of, you know, providing the appropriate aeration for healthier fish, the stagnant water, things like that. And there's also a cosmetic aspect to it. I believe this also includes some LED lights that can be turned on and, and colorized and things like that. It's kind of a whole package deal. I believe it's fairly low maintenance by what she's.
Our guys can do though. We don't have to call in a company? Or do we have to have them come back and do it?
Question we're going to have to find out.
Can we get an entire proposal for this so that we can look at it?
We can. So we'll ask Lorena to go and throw that together. I believe she has an official.
What it will and won't do and.
Right.
You've got to maintain it and.
I think it's a whole idea. And there's also, I want to make sure how it's going to work in the winter, when it freezes up. Is it something we have to pull out? Or for the most part, I think they're really designed to do exactly what we're looking for. But we'll have her assemble something and hopefully get it to you prior to Monday. Okay? Any other questions on the memo that she put forth and the addendum to it? Everyone satisfied with her, her recommendations here?
Well, thinking about it, we're talking about her. Is there some calendar? We're actually having Parks and Rec on the 14th. Yeah. So we can change that.
Very good. Next, I'd like to inform you of my intent to put together currently two ad hoc committees. The first one being a committee to go over our city branding. The main two topics that I would like them to look at is coming up with a new slogan. The one we've had previously, Small Town with a Big Heart. While it may have been great at the time, there are several other municipalities in the state that use it. And I think we can come up with something better. At the same time, I'd like to see if we can come up with a nicer representation for us in the form of a flag. Our current flag is the, we'll call it yellow with sort of our seal on it. I'd like to see if there's something that's a little better representative of us. With that committee, I'm going to put Councilman Haynes as the chair. He and I will work together to assign others to that committee. And then I'll give them a specific charge of what I expect from them and the timeline appropriate. Councilman Haynes will be in charge of that. Next, ARPA. Has anyone ever heard of ARPA? ARPA is the American Rescue Plan Act. This is the sums of money that the federal government decided they're just going to give out to municipalities, directly to municipalities. With that, there is a vast amount of rules and regulations and what you can, what you can't use it for, what days of the week you can do it. It's all sorts of things. I've decided I would like to have an action team to help guide with suggestions how we're going to use the funds coming towards us. I expect we may get our first round of funds probably by the end of this month, by the way their schedule's going. At the latest estimate, we are somewhere in the $5.4 million range of very regulated money. This action team, I would like to be chaired by Councilwoman Foster. And in the same vein, she and I work together to figure out who else we're going to put on this team. And again, they'll be charged with coming up with suggestions, creative ideas that we can make the best use of this money and help further move the city forward. And that's what we're looking for. So now the council is aware. If you have any questions or concerns, feel free to contact me. These are ad hoc committees, so therefore, membership is not going to be subject to council's approval. I'll work with the chairs directly. Lastly, for the evening, well, for our business, selection of a new council member. As you are aware, Darrell Hale, our previous council member, is now our Director of Planning and Zoning. He actually started in this position last Friday. I did speak to him Friday. He was very excited to come on board as an employee and he had a lot to learn. I think every time I saw him, he had a roll of paper towels and a bottle of Windex in his hand. So he was just cleaning like a madman. With that, I'm actually going to hand over to Mayor Portem Vigliotti. He's the one I put in charge of this process to find somebody. So I'll hand it to you, Mayor Portem.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I have a report on the process. On June 14th, 2021, Councilman Darrell Hale tendered his resignation from the city council. The mayor and council determined the vacancy created should be filled through an open application process. The process was there and open to all citizens of Tawnytown aged 21 and older who had lived in the city for at least two years prior to applying. Applicants were required to submit a letter of interest responding to particular prompts and to complete a financial disclosure. The application period commenced on Wednesday, June 16th, 2021, and concluded on Wednesday, June 30th, 2021. Notices of the vacancy and application procedure were printed in the Carroll County Times, posted on the city's social media accounts, posted on the social media accounts of council members, and a new page was created on the city's website specifically to detail the application process and provide necessary information and documents for those interested applicants. The city clerk, as requested, received and held letters and disclosures as they were received, in turn emailing those applications to the mayor and council on Thursday, July 1st, 2021. A total of four applicants submitted materials with the interest of filling the vacancy. Those were, in alphabetical order, Kelly Bowie, Lee Hand, Emmanuel Harvey, and Christopher Miller. All four submitted the required materials and are to be commended and thanked for their interest and desire to serve the city. Public service is neither an easy nor a simple task. It is hard work, it is time-consuming, and it is worth every moment. I also want to take the opportunity to thank Clara Coleman, Dan Dennis, and Jim Weprick for their assistance in the process. As of tonight, July 7th, 2021, the mayor and council have had the opportunity to review the applicant's materials. In keeping with the schedule laid out, council will now endeavor to fill the vacancy. If an applicant is chosen this evening, that said applicant will be formally sworn into office at our meeting on Monday, July 12th, 2021. I now turn things back over to the mayor.
Great. Thank you for your report, Mayor Portem. I appreciate handling all of that. Make sure everything was concise. I do want to make sure before we proceed, Mr. Gallow, from legal standpoint, have we met all obligations for filling this position?
So far, you have. We say that the way you've handled this, the city's handled this.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
My computer in the way. The, the way the city has handled this has been exemplary. You know, I represent other cities around the states. And the way the Mayor Portem has handled this and trying to made it an open process to keep you all informed, but also give everybody flexibility, has been something different that most towns don't do. And so I really want to commend you and happy to be part of that. So what you've done so far meets the burden. What you need to do going forward is obviously you need to vote to fill the slot. And that vote's going to need to be a voice vote. You can't do it by secret ballot since this is going to be a charter position you're putting in there. You have to follow the normal voting requirements. And you normally do things by motion. So it would be appropriate for somebody to make a motion to select somebody. And then somebody would second that. And then you would discuss whether that person would be the one that you want. And then you vote them. And you need a majority of the council that's remaining. So that would be a 3-1 vote. Should you have a 2-2 vote, then the mayor would, under the charter, break the tie. So if you would like to do an example, just so we're clear before you do it, if councilperson A picks Joe Smith and councilperson B says, that's who I want, and the other council people do not want those people, that person, you would vote against that person. And if the motion fails, another nomination or another motion would be made with another name. So this isn't going to be where everybody takes nominations and then you figure who has the most votes. It is not that. Clear? So everybody knows what they're doing and how they do it. And again, in the event of a tie, the mayor breaks the tie.
All right. Crystal clear to all? Outstanding. I'm going to ask the council first. You've had a chance to review all of the applications. Is everyone satisfied that those who put forward are eligible for the office?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The four candidates again are Kelly Bowie, who is currently the Chair of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Lee Hand, who is the Chair of the Board of Zoning Appeals. We have Emmanuel Harvey, who is a member of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and Chris Miller, who is a member of the Planning Commission. Those are the four received. With that, if we are satisfied, I will ask for a motion.
I love that we select Kelly Bowie.
Okay. We have a motion for Kelly Bowie. Do we have a second to that motion? Okay. I do not hear a second. Is that correct? All right. The motion fails for lack of a second. We'll try again. Do we have a motion? Okay. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. Do we wish to discuss?
I just mentioned that all the applicants, I think, were absolutely able to, to take the position. But I think that at this time and where we are, I think that, that Lee has the most to offer. And I hope that in the future, all three of the others will continue to, to search for this office and to run in future elections. But just in reading the qualifications, I think that, yeah, what we're looking for right now.
I want to echo Councilwoman Fuller's comments. It really was not easy. You know, they, all four of them are qualified. All four of them obviously have a sincere passion for serving this community. And they already do in various modes. You know, and to what Councilwoman Fuller said in terms of the materials received and in terms of the, you know, terms of the situation of where the city finds itself presently, I'm in agreement with Councilwoman Fuller's recommendation.
All right. Any further discussion?
I do want to echo what you both have said. Additionally, I want to pass a compliment onto Lee. I think presentation is everything. And while all four applicants were duly qualified, the manner in which Mr. Hand put his letter of intent together was impeccable. It was great. So props to him.
Further discussion? All right. With that, we have motion and a second to appoint Lee Hand to the vacancy on the city council. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right. The vote is three to one. Let the record reflect. With that, Monday evening, we'll be swearing in Lee Hand as new council member. He'll be taking a seat over on the end there. And if there's any changes to liaison ships, I'll announce those at the time now that we have a new member. Lastly, I'm going to open it up for public comment pertaining to agenda items. Anything that was on the agenda that the public would like to speak about, we'd be happy to hear from you. All right. Hearing nothing? All in favor of adjourning, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Very good. We are adjourned.